Good evening and welcome to the City of Auburn, Study Session July 11th, 2022. Call this meeting to order. This evening's meeting is being held both virtually and in person. Hannah, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Jay Rash.
I'm here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Excused.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Malinga.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
Thank you, Hannah. Hannah, do we have any announcements or reports? But we do have an executive session this evening. The council will go into an executive session per RCW 42 dot 30 dot 1101I to discuss litigation for 30 minutes. City Attorney Como, Human Resources Director Martinson, Public Works Director Gauv, and Parks Director Faber will all be required to attend. There is no anticipated action after the executive session, so we should be back by 6:01.
Deputy Mayor, if you don't mind, what I propose is that we take the agenda items first and we do the executive session at the very end of the meeting.
Oh, okay. That was the other thing I was trying to call you about, too. Okay. Tonight, we have one agenda item. That is ordinance number 6878. It'll be presented by Director Thomas.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. I am here. This evening to talk about our second budget amendment of 2022 and our sixth budget amendment of the biennium. I brought with me the Finance Department's Budget Manager, Frank Downard. He is our newly appointed Budget Manager. I don't know if you were aware, but our previous finance or budget manager had retired back in April. His last day, his last day was back in April. And through a recruitment process, we have appointed Frank. He's been with the city as a financial analyst, working on the budget. And so he's now stepped in, and him and his staff are the magic behind the scenes. They are the ones that work on everything budget and data analysis. We're working really hard right now on our 2324 budget, biennial budget process. And I wanted the council to have an opportunity to meet Frank and have Frank have an opportunity to be with us tonight and help answer any questions at the end if the council has any questions for the budget amendment number six.
Welcome, Frank.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll jump right into the budget. Budget Amendment Six accomplishes three different things. Usually, generally speaking, our budget amendments all cover the same things, which is generally new requests, amended requests, and adjusting capital project budgets, which this amendment does, but it also amends our beginning fund balance for 2022. And so this is just putting our ending fund balance and our beginning fund balance in alignment with our position at the end of 2021. So it's kind of our, our resources available, our net resources available at the end of 2021, and updating what our projections for what 2022 would begin with. So when we originally put the 2022 budget together, that's all based on our projections for what we think is going to happen in 2021. 2021 happens, and then there's usually a little bit of a difference. And so we now true up our 2022 net position with how we actually ended 2021. So with that, this is, this is a summary of all of the changes that we've made to all of our funds to true up the 2022 beginning fund balances. As you can see, we have a couple of significant big changes. The first column that you can see on the screen is our budgeted beginning fund balance. So that's what we had anticipated to begin the year with as far as net position goes. And then BA Six trues up to what our actual beginning position was at the beginning of 2022. We made a pretty significant increase to the general fund for $17.2 million. When, this is, has to do with our, we collected more revenue than we had originally anticipated, and we had some under expenditures, mostly due to attrition throughout 2021. We talked about that during our fourth quarter review of the general fund. So this is just getting the budget, the 2022 budget caught up with that, that year-end report that you had received earlier in the year. Then we have other governmental funds. We adjusted across all of those funds $13.8 million. The primary driver for this is our impact mitigation funds. So there's two things that are driving that increase. We ended the year slightly better in both our impact mitigation fees that we received for traffic and parks mitigation fees, but also just the timing of projects. So we budget all of our capital projects. A lot of our capital projects use impact mitigation funds to fund those projects. And as long as we're not finishing those projects or spending the money down on those projects as we had originally anticipated, there's usually some savings or some net position left over at the year end. That doesn't mean we're not recommitting those monies and carrying them forward, but they just didn't get spent completely at the end of 2021 like we had anticipated. For our general governmental capital funds, we adjusted $7.6 million. This is primarily related to REIT. So we had collected $4 million in REIT more at the end of 2021 than we had anticipated, plus the timing of projects again. So we also rely on REIT to fund a lot of our capital projects. And if we didn't finish those or complete those projects as we had anticipated in 2021, it carries forward into, to the beginning of 2022. Our water sewer, storm, solid waste, airport, and cemetery funds, those are all of our proprietary funds or what we call our business funds. We also made an adjustment to their net position. Again, this is the timing of projects. The primary increases were to our water sewer and storm capital funds and just the timing of projects being completed. And then the next group is our, is our insurance, IT, equipment rental, and our facilities fund. Those are our internal service funds. And on the net position, we also increased a lot of this was due to our equipment replacement fund and just the timing of replacement for equipment and vehicles in the equipment replacement fund. And then all other funds, those are our endowment funds and our custodial funds, which is, which means it's not really the city's money to spend. We just hold that money in trust. And there was only a slight increase of $62,000 in total across all of those funds. So a summary of the changes that we're requesting in budget amendment number six for the general fund is we are requesting total new expenditures of 1.6 million, but that's being offset by 1.1 million in revenue. And this includes ARPA fund, ARPA projects as well in the general fund. General Fund ARPA, so about $1.6 million in new expenditures, $815,000 is ARPA programs. And across all funds, we're requesting to add 1.1 million to the budget for ARPA, for ARPA projects. Now, all of those projects are funded out of the general fund. They are in other funds as well. And then we're also asking for new, two new limited term positions. These, both these positions are not going to have any general fund or any budget impact at all. We'll be either using grant money or existing budgets to absorb the cost. These positions are limited term in nature. So they're considered one time in nature, or at least they have a term to them, and they don't have an ongoing cost. The reason we put them in here is because adding either a new FTE or even a limited term position, even though it's, it's adding a new person to the budget, it requires council approval. So that's why we are putting these two, highlighting these two positions in the budget amendment for the council. This is a list of all of our new general fund programs and offsetting revenues that we're requesting in BA Six. The first is for the EMPG grant, the 2021 EMPG grant. There was a little bit more revenue that had been awarded to cities as a result of ARPA. So the general fund has a, it's a zero net impact on the general fund because this is just increasing our expenditure budget to reflect additional revenue that has been awarded to us. The second is to increase our general fund budget by $55,000 for recruitment outreach. This is for a module in our NeoGov, which is our recruitment software that our Human Resource Department uses to help be more proactive in our recruitment searches. We've had 62 positions filled since the beginning of the year so far, and this is hope, going to hopefully help us be a little bit more proactive, hopefully attract a wider and more varied applicant pool than we're currently attracting. HR's working very hard, but hopefully this will kind of help lessen their load or at least find, help them find more applicants for, for departments that, for the positions they're recruiting. Property, for property management, we're asking to increase the budget by $58,500. This is twofold. This is for some miscellaneous property cleanup items that happen unexpectedly throughout the year, but also to hire a consultant for a wetland mitigation review to find out how we can best leverage potential wetland mitigation areas and possibly future development for this, development opportunities for the city. For $186,000 is the King County election cost increase. These are the costs by both Pierce and King County to run the elections programs. We do not have control over these costs. The county, they establish what it's going to cost to run elections countywide, and then we are assigned, essentially sent a bill for our portion of those election costs. And they have been increasing, they have increased significantly this year and also in the future years as well. For the skip, we're adding $7,190 to both the revenue and the expenditure side. This is more of a house cleaning item. We are the administering agency for skip. We don't make the decision, the spending decisions for skip, but be, being the agency that handles all of the money in and all of the money out for skip, this is just the housekeeping item to put into the general fund. We're bringing, they're bringing on the City of Maple Valley, and this is their prorated share of the administrative costs for 2022. And their, their revenue and their expenditure piece. Previously approved is the school speed, zone enforcement cameras. This is for 12 cameras in school zones. Right now, the total estimated cost to go online in the, the last quarter of 2022 is $154,000. We're currently budgeting $154,000 in anticipated revenue just to offset the, the cost. There's an expectation that we would probably generate a little bit more revenue and that that additional revenue above and beyond the program costs would go towards specific programs approved by the council. But for now, just to be conservative, we're, we're making it a, a neutral, a cost-neutral program, and we'll reevaluate the end of the year through project accounting if there's any money left over. Then there's increasing $185,000 for the channelization, road rate channelization projects. This is putting the stripes and the, and the lines in the middle of the road. The costs have been increasing, both paint and the plastic materials for these projects has continued to increase, as well as finding contractors that who are able to do the work. The cost of the contractors has also increased. So we're asking for additional money. We have two four culture, four culture grants that have, that we're just trying to recognize the revenue and then the offsetting expenditures for those two programs. And then, as you can see, the, the new, two new LTEs. One LTE is for, is going to be a contract specialist in community development to help with the administration of CDBG and ARPA funds. CDBG funds will be set aside to fund this LTE position, so it's no new cost to the general fund. We'll use existing resources. And then a new LTE as a wellness coordinator officer, which is offset by the health support and suicide prevention grant that we've received through the Washington State Patrol. So with all those adjustments, as well as the beginning fund adjustment, the total impact on the general fund fund balance would be to adjust the, the fund balance for 2022 from 9.4 million with an estimated ending fund balance at the end of 2022 of $26.2 million. To move out of the general fund a little bit, I wanted to focus on ARPA. One of the things that we are starting to do as part of this budget amendment, as well as the biennial budget, is get all of those ARPA programs that had been previously earmarked through the ad hoc committee and adopted by council, getting those items actually into the budget. And so we've got a couple of new programs that we've added that were in the original plan but are not currently in the budget, and that is $500,000 for the encampment and dumping cleanup. And then items two, three, and four are both from the, are all three from the police department and not what, those were areas identified for public safety improvement. And that is the duty handgun improvements, the spider tech customer communications, and the Axon drone, drone program. Then bringing in the broadband, broadband grants to the hardest-hit communities, as well as the security cameras and qualified census tracts, those last two items are projects that will be managed by the IT department. So all other funds? These are all of the other changes. Most of these are all capital project impacts. We are adding, we got a couple of new grant funds for both Cedar Lane's bike park improvements, as well as the park playground improvements. Those are grant-funded projects. So we're recognizing the new revenue as well as the expenditures associated with those, and then removing the Jacobson Tree Farm Development Project for $333,000 from the Parks Construction Fund and pushing out the, the work on that project into future years. In the capital improvement fund, we are budgeting for the $450,000 for the Max House property purchase, which was previously approved through council action. This is just to get the money in the budget. And then adding $82,000 for the decorative LED light conversion program in downtown. This is just expanding the existing program, the program that had, had been originally started. This expands the program a little bit more. We are adding $1.1 million for the Phase One of the MNO facility improvements. This is to in, in, increase the base space for the fleet crew to be able to work on all of the, the vehicles that they need to work on, as well as improving the electrical, the electrical outlets at the, at the MNO building to get those up to code. And then reducing $765,000 for the, $765,000 from the budget for the Lee Hill Safe Routes to Schools, which was originally grant-funded and, and contributions. We did not receive those grants, so we're re-appropriating some of that, that project funds. In the water sewer and storm funds, we are reducing the, this Coal Creek Springs transmit, mission main, which is also originally hope, we had hoped to have that mostly funded by grants and loans. We did not receive the grant yet, so we are going to be reducing the budget for that project. But then adding 352,000, 342,000 for the seismic, seismic retrofits at reservoirs for N8, which are also grant, those ones are actual grant-funded. We received new grants that we hadn't originally anticipated, so we are now budgeting for that. The total project is going to be 1.4 million. The 342,000 is the design cost anticipated in 2022. And then the last, but not least, is $25,000 to our facilities funds to cover the maintenance costs and the operational costs of maintaining Mel's Lot, which is our outdoor parking lot for city staff and employees. Historically, the city has owned that lot and has maintained that lot with our own city staff and our own resources. Now we are paying the current owner to maintain, they're, they're paying directly the costs, and then we're paying our prorated portion of those maintenance costs directly to them. So that is the summary of BA Six and anticipation for council adoption, improve, and approval at the next meeting, the July 18th council meeting, unless there are any questions or amendments from the council.
Thank you, Director Thomas. Council, do you have any questions? Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I did hope you could maybe go back to the ARPA slide.
The which slide? Oh, ARPA?
ARPA, yep.
Okay.
Could you take me through items two, three, and four, which I think are earmarked for police? You said that those fall under which area within ARPA?
So there's, so I can, I can explain a little bit. If I stumble, I might have to turn to the, the police department to help me. So there's, they're being funded under two programs that we had under, originally earmarked under ARPA funding. One, we had $250,000 set aside for enhancement of public safety. And then we had some carryover, unspent funds from the body camera contracts from 2021. So those are the two earmarked programs that we are planning to use, planning to use to fund these three projects, a combination of these three projects. And then, did you want to know a little bit more about each of the programs? So the duty handgun improvements is for 100 new handguns. It uses red dot technology, and the idea behind this technology is it helps officers have a, a more expanded peripheral vision when they're, when they're working on a scene, reducing, hopefully giving them more reaction time, hopefully, to be able to make, have more time to make what would normally be split-second decisions. So hopefully safer for officers and for the community. The Spider Tech Customer Communications is a, a real-time text messaging system. So when somebody places a call into Valley Communications or the 911 Center, they can receive real-time updates from the time that the call has been made, up until the, an officer has been, is en route, an officer is onsite, and a call has been closed out. The Axon Drone Program is for licenses to have officers man drones, and those drones are used for mapping whether accident scenes or crime scenes, and then I'm getting better kind of like map data of a, of a scene that goes then directly, that goes, that's uploaded automatically electronically onto a computer for assessment and analysis.
Thank you, Councilmember Baldwin. Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, I know you've shared this before, but the Max House, where is that?
It's the property right adjacent to the Auburn Avenue Theater.
Oh, okay.
And the, the idea of purchasing that property, since the theater is currently closed, it really will give the city an opportunity to kind of maximize and leverage our resources to build both an economic kind of center on that corner, as well as getting us a new theater rebuilt.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Trout Manuel. Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. That, that sounds great, the theater. Very excited about that. The Axon Drone Program you just mentioned, so that's for four license, I have four licenses?
Do you remember how many licenses? There's two different types of licenses, if I recall.
But it's not like for the actual drones themselves?
No, it's for the licensing and the pilot, like pilot licenses, I think, for them.
Okay, thank, thank you. And I, I just had one.
Yes, you may.
Okay. I'm, I was looking at the Schedule B, the 2022 ending fund balance slash working capital by fund. And I was just curious about the, one, two, three, seventh item, I think, which is drug forfeiture fund. And it shows like a, I, I think that's an increase, right, of 500,000? I was just wondering what, is that an increase or a decrease?
Well, is, this, that would probably be all fund balance. That's all fund balance increase. And that's going back to, so that would be changes in activity in 2021, so it's adjusting our beginning 2022 fund balance. Typically speaking, it's, we don't budget much as far as what we expect to receive in drug forfeitures. And so we probably received more in 2021 than we had originally budgeted for.
Okay, thank you. That, that answers.
Councilmember Baldwin.
And one more note, the EMPG grant, was that a emergency management grant?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Council? I have a couple of questions. Can you tell me what qualified census tracts mean?
So that, it's kind of, it's a, it's been a little bit of a moving target, but it's was established at the beginning of COVID to identify more areas within the city that, based on economy and economics, areas that were maybe more below, I'm trying to think of, hard, yeah, harder to hit, there are harder-hit communities, disproportionately harder-hit communities, and so identifying those census tracts then that would qualify as a harder-hit community as a result of COVID.
Okay. And then my other question is, is back to Councilmember Sterns' question on the drug seizure, seizures. Does the police department use that, those funds, or do we use the funds as, on, in the general fund?
So it's restricted to specific use, and that money is specific, is restricted specifically to drug, better drug enforcement programs to help prevent more drug activity in the future. So it's got, the RCW is very restrictive about how we spend those funds. So typically speaking, it would be, it could be for staffing for drug enforcement. It could be equipment for drug enforcement, but either way, it, the focus is on drug enforcement.
Thank you, Director Thomas. Council? Councilmember Baldwin.
I get time just to come up with more questions. So, and thank you, Deputy Mayor. On the duty handgun improvements, with that being a program that would improve safety around potential drawing of weapons, is a program like that able to lower any sort of insurance for the city in that area?
I'm not sure. That would be a question that we'd probably need to go back to our insurer, our WCIA, and see. I don't, at this time, that hasn't been something that has been on our radar as a potential savings.
Okay. Has this been something that has been on a backlog or desired or planned? I'm just unfamiliar with the technology, I guess.
My understanding, and, and if there's anybody in the, in the director's panel that can help, my understanding, this is pretty new technology as far as the use for, by police departments.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, I, I didn't hear your full question.
Sure. I was just curious to learn a little bit more about the duty handgun improvements. The first part was whether that would impact or affect our insurance that we might pay as, for the city from a liability perspective. And then I was also unfamiliar with the technology, so I was curious if you had any more information on that that you could share, either today or, you know, over to council.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for your questions. I'm, I'm sorry, I can't answer the question about insurance. But as far as the technology, the technology has been around. We have members of our department, especially on SWAT, who've been using it for between five and 10 years. It is a, there's a red dot that goes up on a glass, on a little viewport on the, that will be on the pistol then. And in addition, we're going to outfit all the pistols with lights so that the officers will be able to illuminate any situation that they need to in dark environments, since they're working every night. And the red dot specifically helps out a lot with target identification and making sure that people with bad eyes, especially as officers get older, like myself, you have, if you have bad eyes, it's easier to see the red dot than it is your, your sights. if you have bad eyes, it's easier to see the red dot than it is your, your sights oftentimes. And so it is, ultimately, it's a, we're having upgraded holsters as well, so it's safer for the community and for the officers all the way around.
Thank you for the detail.
I'm happy to answer the insurance question, if you'd like.
Oh, yeah, please.
Councilmember Baldwin, if you'd like me to answer the insurance question. So the city's part of the WCIA, Washington City's Insurance Authority Risk Pool, and there is no discount in our rate or any kind of rebate or reimbursement for the duty handgun improvements. I believe that was the topic that we were discussing.
Thank you. Next, thank you, Director Thomas. Thank you very much. Next, we will move into Public Works and Community Development Discussion Items. We have two items this evening, ordinance number 6877 and Capitol Project Status Report. Please welcome Chair for both these items, Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So ordinance number 6877, and we have these fine gentlemen, thank you, not Director Baldwin, but you can identify yourself. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and members of this Auburn City Council. My name is Tim Karlaw and I'm a storm drainage engineer. And with me this evening, I have Chris Thorne, who's our Water Quality Programs Coordinator. And we're going to talk about ordinance 6877, where we will be addressing proposed changes to the Storm Drainage Code 1348. So our current code requires the implementation of source control best management practices or those practices that are intended to prevent or reduce the release of pollutants to new and redevelopment, redeveloped properties only. We did some recent code changes in May.
Can you speak up, please?
Oh, we, we did some code changes in May where we clarified that the city may inspect properties to ensure the use of these best management practices. But the code did not require the application of the BMPs to the existing activities and land uses. And that's the big changes that we're proposing here is the code doesn't allow us to enforce current or existing properties, only redeveloped or newly developed properties per our drainage manual that we have. And the issue is that we have our National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit, which requires that we mandate the use of source control best management practices for pollution generating sources associated with the existing properties or sites. So again, we have current code that allows us to implement these on exist, or not existing, but proposed or redeveloped properties, but not the existing. And that's where we have to bridge that gap now to be compliant with our state permit. So regarding the changes themselves, we will be required in 2023 to begin the inspection program to approximately 20% of, of our sites in, in the city annually. We will do this first through the use of education and technical assistance, going out to the sites, producing or providing visits and just noting issues. And we've included a couple of examples here. The example on the left, both of them frankly are open dumpsters, which is a major source of pollution as the, the holes in the deep, the dumping and all that whole process of disposal allows pollutants out into the, onto the surface, which gets into the drainage system. Also on the left, we have open storage, which is a practice that is, leads to pollution as well. And as you can see, there's debris. In this case, this is a stone cutting process, business and has a lot of issues going on. And on the right side, just trash and unkept. All these lead to pollution and source control. Inspection and education will help to eliminate that and help, help us become compliant with our, with our requirements under our permit. So in order to clearly define the requirements, we propose to add a section 1348 to 15 entitled Source Control Best Management Practices to help us with the authority to achieve the goal of, of implementing this program to improve, ultimately improve the water quality discharge from our municipal drainage system. And our next steps would be for the council to consider adoption of ordinance 6877 at the July eighteenth council meeting. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Well, thank you. How are you going to man this? Because I have seen some people going through the dumpsters and just throwing everything out and leaving the trash there. Are, are you citing the owners or how are we going, how is that handled?
Ultimately, the property owners are responsible, but typically the property owners are not onsite in many cases. So we will engage the property managers, you know, whoever's in charge of the particular operation. In many cases, these will be shared dumpsters or areas where, you know, you have a strip mall and they have one unit in the back. So we'll have to talk to all of those to, to try to improve their, their, their methods.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Sorry, Mike. Councilmember Baldwin.
Thank you very much. My question is just to help kind of create better context when we talk about stormwater and drainage and why it's important. If we have pollution going into these areas, where does that wind up? Does that wind up in our good Green River? Does that wind up, where's that head out to?
Well, we have several major drainages. We're, we have the Green River, the White River, Mill Creek, and then also the, the surface water absorbing and infiltrating into the ground. So we really have four different areas where we have discharges, if we will, and we're required to monitor, not monitor, excuse me, that's the wrong term, but to, to.
Protect.
Protect, yes, thank you.
I think we can all agree, clean water is a great thing. For those different areas, Green River, White River, Mill Creek, and just general surface water, is there any area in particular where we tend to have more challenge as far as keeping good quality?
Take that, Chris.
I'm not sure if there's any one particular area that, that is more challenging. Some are perhaps more obvious. If you have a discharge into a smaller creek, it may be more obvious than a discharge into a large river like the Green River. Obviously, the, the White River, sometimes of the year, you really can't tell what's going into it because it's, it's got so much sediment into it. Certainly, going into groundwater is, is a major concern because that's where we're getting our drinking water. So I think it's really imperative that we protect all of the, the different receiving waters for our storm drainage.
One follow-on? Last question, thanks. Do we, do anything with the current National Pollution Discharge Elimination System requirements with regards to some of the challenges we've had with illegal encampments along the riverfronts? Does that fall in that context in any capacity or is that considered separate?
Well, yes, we don't have a direct connection. We don't go out and, and inspect or, or look at that. That is managed by other parties in the city. But yes, they are cleaned up and then that cleanup, you know, leads to, you know, better, better water. So indirectly, absolutely.
Okay. All right. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you there, Chairman Sterns. Appreciate it. My question pertains to some perhaps large customers that are in manufacturing. Is this an area that we have oversight and responsibility for? Let's say, for example, Boeing Company.
Yes, well, we do with all, with all parcels and properties in Auburn, we do. And obviously some are of different magnitude, but we will try to apply the same techniques and, and, and educational engagements as needed. Boeing in particular, it might be a little bit challenging because of the access requirements in there.
Yeah.
Certainly also, some of the larger industrial facilities have their own permits from the state, their own NPDS industrial permits. So they are regulated under those requirements. We would be working with the state pretty much if necessary for some of those larger sites, such as a Boeing, which is somewhat beyond our capability.
I don't know if they still operate it, but I recall a system which involved living fish, trout, I believe, where they would, like cooling water would make sure that they ran it through that. So trout are pretty sensitive. So I don't know. Anyway, I thought that was interesting. I just had to tell that story. Thanks.
That's a, that's an excellent story. Any other questions?
I, I've got just two quick ones. Does the, does this cover like any of the runoff from the roads?
It does through our, our municipal operations. So we are required to do like maintenance of the storm system, inspecting our storm system. So a lot of it is just making sure that we are, are doing proper maintenance in a timely manner to remove like sediment that collects in catch basins or that goes into our storm ponds.
Okay. And, and then just more on, I guess, on the compliance side, does the city have the power to like issue fines?
If necessary. And we, the, our stormwater permit does require that we have a, a progressive enforcement capability, but it also specifies that we are to start with education and outreach, which we do. We currently have the capability to go to our code enforcement branch if we are not getting compliance and work with them. But in my career here, we have never gone beyond, say, a notice to correct. And that has always achieved compliance, so.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that for your presentation. My last chance, anyone? Nope? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Capitol Projects Update Summer 2022 Construction Summary. And thank you.
Good evening, Council. For the record, Ryan Bondrek, Capital and Construction Engineering Manager. Pull up the presentation here. So here to provide a Capitol Project update specific to some summer construction activities that are going on out there. The first, a few statistics. The Capitol Projects Group is actively managing 41 Capitol Projects at a total value of approximately 95 million. Twenty-two of those projects are currently in design and then 19 of those are in some form of construction. This graphic here is our illustration showing the total number of projects, of construction contracts that have been procured over the last five-plus years against the total project value for those projects. So in looking at the last bar on the far right, in 2022, we've procured 10 contracts to date in the blue at a total value of 9.6 million approximately. And then by year's end, we expect to procure or we anticipate to procure another five contracts at a total value of 6.8 million. So what's going on out there right now? There's still a lot. We're in the middle of summer. The first project I wanted to highlight this evening is CP 1927, our Auburn Way North and First Streets Northeast Signal Replacement Project. So this project is replacing the aging signal at the intersection. And then on top of that, we are improving the pedestrian and vehicular safety by reconstructing the curb ramps at each of the four corners and improving some vehicular capacity with some channelization work. And the picture at the bottom there is what the signal looked like recently, but we've had a lot of few changes that's been going on. I did have a couple of photos in this presentation that are outdated and so I wanted to actually exit this and show you a couple of newer photos because as with anything, construction happens quickly. this picture, I don't know how to use paint, so I don't know how to get rid of this little thing on the, on the right, so bear with me. But this is a picture looking at northeast, I guess towards kind of the Wells Fargo building there. But as you can see, the pavement has been installed, so all the pavement is there. And then we just put up the traffic signal poles. You can see the black one there, it's decorative, poles that we were installing. And then you can see in front of the Wells Fargo sign, there's a traffic signal equipment that's actually being installed. And then I have one more photo just for the sake of this. Here's a photo of the intersection looking west. And so you can see all four poles have been installed, so pretty exciting. We are trying to get the rest of the intersection wrapped up, but we are waiting on some coordination with PSE to get power out to the site. So that's what's happening out there right now, but First Street is closed and it's going to remain closed through the end of July, expected. Back to our presentation. All right. Next project I want to highlight was the Lead Service Line Replacement Project, CP 1922. This project is replacing approximately seven, or over 7,000 feet of water main and services. We are doing some reconstruction and or overlay, street overlays, so combination of the two. We are upgrading curb ramps and doing some sidewalk and driveway improvements. Construction from, for this project began in November. There are four different areas encompassing nine different locations. With installing over 7,000 feet of water main, you get lots and lots of pipes. So that's what you see on the left-hand side there, is just a bunch of pipe waiting to be installed. And then on the right-hand side, you have the open trench waiting to receive that pipe. These are actually old photos. That's because all nine sites are actually all paved out, all the water lines have been installed and all of the pavement has been installed. And we've been recently doing some channelization work, so restriping where necessary. And the contractor is actively doing some concrete work and then some landscaping restoration. And then we should be wrapping up that project here in the next couple of weeks. That's a pretty phenomenal for the amount of work that's being done out there. The contractor hit this project pretty hard, actively employing between three and four different crews every single day. So same contractor at three different sites, even four different sites every single day. So it's a pretty big accomplishment for this project. Next project, Second Street Southeast Preservation, CP 2003. This is right in front of Safeway. So this project is a complete roadway reconstruction project. We are doing some street lighting improvement. project. We are doing some street lighting improvements on the north side of the roadway, installing sanitary sewer and a little bit of storm drainage improvements, upgrading the curb ramps and installing sections of sidewalk. The street is closed and will remain closed during construction activities. Construction began in April. You see the project site photo there looking, I guess that is, uh, west and that's what the site used to look like. Today, it is a, pretty much a dirt pile. So we go out there, um, and that's pretty much what it looks like. This was, this photo was taken about a week ago. There is some activity out there currently. Uh, the most of the activity has been related to the underground utility improvements that they're installing on the south side of the road, actually on both sides of the road. So there's a couple of utility vaults. They're significant, or large utility vaults that have been installed. And, uh, they are actively pursuing concrete work through the corridor. And we expect them to pave, uh, middle of August. So that's a, that project there. Next project I want to highlight was the Lee Hill Bridge Deck Preservation Project. This project performed some crack ceiling, um, grinded out the top layer of the bridge deck and replaced some expansion joints and then did a thin overlay of the bridge deck on Eighth Street Northeast over the Green River where you go to Lee Hill Road. Construction of that project actually happened in April and May, so it's actually done. I have a couple of photos that I wanted to show you. This first one here is pretty cool. This is them placing and finishing the concrete and then using a track style spreader. That's that red machine is there to do the finish work. And so you see the guys, uh, troweling and, uh, doing some handwork there. This is the finished product. The product, or the photo on the left is looking west. And then, uh, we have photo on the right looking east. Like I said, this project is, uh, complete, but we have some maintenance activities still to be done on, uh, at this particular location. Third Street Southwest Bridge Deck Preservation. This project, uh, actually the work on this project happened over the weekend. This is the Third Street Bridge Decks over C Street Southwest between, uh, or over the, as you enter the SR eighteen. They cleaned the bridge decks and removed some debris and then applied a protective sealant over the bridge decks. That work was done, like I said, over the weekend and they opened it up early on Sunday. Actually, it was supposed to take place all the way until Monday morning. But that project also has some maintenance activity work as well before we close out that contract. Both this project, Third Street Southwest Bridge Decks and the Lee Hill Bridge Decks were fully funded with a grant. So, um, city did not have to participate in that, which was pretty exciting. Fourth Street Southeast Preservation Project from Auburn Way South to L Street Southeast. This project is doing a preservation of the roadway and, uh, reconstruction, mostly a reconstruction now. It's also installing some water improvements, about seventeen-hundred feet, sewer improvements, just under nine hundred feet. They're replacing some sections of sidewalks, doing some street lighting improvements. And then this project is a segmented roadway closure. So the portion between Auburn Way South and F Street Southeast was recently closed for a period while they were doing some work and that has opened back up. And now the section between F Street and L Street is closed for construction activities. That project began this year in, uh, April. Here's a few photos looking west on Fourth Street Southeast for the section that is open to traffic again. They have, uh, completed the curb ramps and the bulb outs. They've looked really good. That is, uh, improving the pedestrian access and creating a road diet through the corridor. And that is paved to the base lift. So they still have to come back and pave the final lift and do some channelization work, but it is paved through that corridor. And then just like Second Street, when you turn around and you look east, that is what you see. It is closed to, through traffic and they're, uh, currently installing storm improvements through this section. And then they're going to move to the water improvements next. And, uh, this street will be closed through July and, um, into August until that paving gets underway. Last project I wanted to highlight is actually not a capital improvement project. This is a development project, the Chinook Elementary School Roundabout. I wanted to bring this one up because, uh, this work is being taken place on Auburn Way South and they're currently constructing that roundabout, um, through that corridor. This is between Hemlock Drive and, um, Hopper Curve. They, I wanted to bring this up because, uh, they are getting close to shifting traffic. If you drive through there, you were, uh, there's a lot going on and you're on the south side of the roadway. They're getting close to shifting the traffic to the north side onto the new roundabout part. I got a couple of photos. They're not the greatest because it's kind of hard to take photos out there, but this is kind of what the north side of the roundabout, the new roundabout looks like. So the photo on the top left is looking west. And so middle photo there is, uh, still looking west, but taken a little bit further back. And then further back even more is the photo in the top right. So in the next couple of weeks, we should have traffic shifted over to that side of the roadway. Uh, they're kind of finishing up some of the concrete work and some of the storm, but they're really close to finishing up the school improvements because they gotta get that school open for the school year coming up. So that is my presentation for this evening.
Thank you very much. Excellent. Um, we've got some questions for you. Uh, Councilmember Brown?
Thank you Chairman Sterns. I, um, appreciate the presentation. Uh, I live, uh, on the street corner of Second Street Northeast and D. And so we've gone through the, the, uh, you know, replacement of those pipes. Uh, I just want to say, although it was a total pain getting in and out of the neighborhood occasionally, uh, the contractor's done a beautiful job. Uh, and, uh, they did their best to manage that situation for the people in the neighborhood. And, uh, the work they've done on the curbs, uh, is just beautiful. So, uh, just waiting for them to install the stop signs, uh, up back on the poles because I've seen a couple of people blow the stop sign because it was lowered, you know, on a, uh, leaning whatever sawhorse looking.
Yeah, we appreciate the kind words. We've actually, it's been a difficult season, actually. We've run into a lot of, there's a lot of material procurement issues with some of the stuff, that, um, First Street Signal Project, months and months of delays waiting for signal equipment to come in. Uh, the water pipes, we're actually surprised we were able to get, um, that project on CP nineteen twenty-two lead service line, the water lines because of the, some of the delays in getting some of those materials. Uh, but everyone's been pretty gracious and, uh, patient and especially with all the roadway closures that we've had to deal with for some of the stuff, so.
Thanks.
Um, Councilmember Chop Manuel.
Thank you, Councilmember Sterns. Um, yeah, thank you for a much-needed update. Uh, and you guys are doing such a fabulous job out there. I just want to put that out for, upfront. Uh, when do you see the, uh, project Second Street coming to a completion?
Second Street, so they're doing concrete work today. And, uh, they will be doing that for a couple of weeks. That'll push us into early August and then they will start paving. And so middle of August, they'll pave and we should have, should be able to drive on it by, uh, middle of August timeframe, hopeful.
Oh, great. That's good news. But can I ask one more? Okay. Then also, uh, I love what you're doing up there on the hill, uh, for the Muckleshoot School, uh, and the turnabout, turn around. That's gonna look really nice. But yeah, it is a pain when you have to go up there and the concerts are going on and there's the one lane. Uh, but we'll survive. And, uh, when's the completion of that? When you said it should be done before the school's open?
Yeah, well, the, the school needs to open for the, the school year and then I, I don't know if they're gonna get all of the roundabout, um, completed by the school year, but it will be operational.
Okay. Alright.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's it.
Um, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you Chairman Sterns. Um, Ryan, my question has to do with, uh, the Lee Hill Bridge Deck. Uh, that one's probably done, right? If I'm not mistaken?
It is complete. There is some maintenance work that we need to finish up and we have inspections with the state and things like that. But
Okay.
It is complete and traffic is driving across there.
Okay. Uh, my question, uh, has to do with, is there any future plans on expanding that bridge? So because it's a bottleneck anyway right now.
We don't currently have anything on the books and I don't, um, all our future projects are pertaining to more to the, um, with the, uh, roundabout, or hopefully build a roundabout at one oh fourth and expand that project up going up Lee Hill, all that, um, expanding the bridge. That's not currently in, in place or, um, projected anytime soon that I know.
Okay.
So if I can, if I can just add to that. So the current bridge is actually wide enough for four lanes. The issue is, is the limitation on the traffic coming down Lee Hill Road.
Say there you go.
So the bridge itself is actually wide enough for four lanes through there. So the limitations that we have are actually the road coming down Lee Hill as well as the access from a hundred and second. So the first phase of that entire Lee Hill Road project that we have is to actually, uh, disconnect a hundred and second from Eighth Street and connect it further south over to a hundred and fourth for its access. And the next project that we're currently seeking funding for is to build a roundabout at a hundred and fourth, which will change that lane configuration through there and open up some of that access and also remove some of the issues that you have with the drop lane that, uh, as you're heading eastbound, that drops onto a hundred and fourth by having that go through the roundabout to be able to be used in both of those. So that's how we're addressing that. Rebuilding that bridge is a significant, um, probably thirty million dollar type of a cost, especially with going over the river, uh, and trying to get permits for what that would be. So it's not necessarily a realistic, um, approach to trying to address what we need to do with that roadway. So we're looking at what we're doing with the roadway further to the east as you go up the hill to address that capacity.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? None? Alright, thank you again. That was excellent presentation and it's always great to see what the city is doing to make our roads and sidewalks better. Thank you. Um, I will cede the con back to the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you Chairman Sterns and, um, I may have to sign back. One second. So we don't have any more discussion items, so we are going to go into an executive session, uh, session for RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero one, section I, to discuss litigation for thirty minutes. City Attorney Cuomo, Human Resources Director Martinson, Public Works Director Gao, Fox Director Fabley will be required to attend. No anticipated action after the executive session. So it should be done by seven oh two.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
Yeah, well, I'm glad I'm glad you were here, but uh. Oh, really? Well, that's what you were saying, that some of the like the SWAT team's been using it. Oh, okay, so like you can really find your. I like the the and the way the chief had wrote up the description was it enhances your peripheral vision, so you have more time to focus on your decisions and less time to focus on your gun, or something like that, and I was like, oh, that was good.
I think most officers buy their gun. And they carry their own. They like pull out.
Well.
Yeah.
Oh, not like not at work.
I don't know.
At work.
Oh, you can carry this there, can you?
Yeah, Mark's got his case on.
So how do you guys like? Cause can you do like?
You just have to, you just have to, they reassign a form, give them a certain number of range masters. The range master then approves, they know, I mean, most of them is the same.
Are you allowed to like?
Uh so the range master has to, the range master has to, if you modify your gun too much, the range master has to approve it. They have to inspect your gun for quality. And then uh if it's if it's your personal requirement, then you can carry it.
That's kind of having your. Oh, so then you can just.
Get it past the department, just where you can find you. Like the department will not buy it. Or the department will not buy it. For the longest time, police officers are gonna miss with their gun.
Okay.
Better have two hands up like that with a flashlight.
And so rather than putting your money into modifying and putting those onto a city-owned gun, then at least your gun.
Yeah, you you want to, you want the best technology possible. If the employer's like buying, we're even on people.
Well, we're buying them now. Yeah.
Council, we have come to the end of our council study session. And that call this meeting adjourned.